The Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday, December 9th. The Council Room at 6:00 PM. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
John?
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy Ad Hoc Agencies. To my knowledge, we haven't had a meeting. Consider approval of consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the previous month's meeting, approval of claims as follows. General Fund $22,650.78, RSTF $54,444.98. Previous month's claims, $1,780.32. Town Treasurers report.
Um, I don't, I know I haven't updated anybody in a while, but, um, so that check that was, you know, fraudulently cashed through our bank account, um, the bank did reimburse us the money for that. Um, but we have to, they made us do a, go on their positive pay system.
Mm-hmm.
So now, like, five days a week, I have to log in and, you know, whatever checks are showing up to be paid, you know, approve them. Um, but I, I don't know, I haven't heard any updates on the report that was filed.
I haven't.
You haven't either?
Okay.
So, I don't know where we are with that, but...
Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
3.4, approve meeting schedule for 2026. 3.5, approve budget amendment 26-1, increasing the restricted fund for police and fire. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Number four, citizens' comments. Okay. Five, town administrators' report. Tiffany?
Um, just a little bit. Um, Alyssa and I attended last week the Governor's Water Conference. Um, they, I know I went through all the sessions of Oklahoma. They're coming out with a 2025, um, comprehensive water plan, so we went through that. Um, and then, um, they talked a lot about conservation of water and how valuable the water is and things like that, so just trying to keep, um, I know a lot of the legislatures were, legislative people were there too and talked to us about how it is on their, you know, their minds to conservation of water and, and keeping the water good. Um, also, I went on, that was Wednesday and Thursday, Friday, I went down to Wayne, Oklahoma, and went to a workshop on business retention and expansion by the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. And so I got a, some pretty neat ideas that I'm gonna be working on, and in fact, um, one of their rural development specialists, Jamie Beasley, she's gonna come visit with me next Wednesday, and we're gonna try to put some, start some of that, um, like a BR and E team, um, that can go around and try to, try to see how we can all help the, the businesses stay intact. Not necessarily gaining new business, but making sure our businesses here stay intact and maybe can grow. Um, other than that, um, our water syst, when our water went off and we couldn't do the alert notification, um, I found out a week later that their system had been hacked, and so they shut down the whole thing. And so that's why we couldn't get in, we couldn't get ahold of them, their website went down, everything went down. So they are upgrading us to a new system. Um, I've been going through some webinars, trying to learn the new system. Um, it's a little bit more comprehensive than the last one was, and so there will be, they're trying to bring over all of the contacts that were on the old system to the new, some of them will not, so we will have probably a sign up with a new link, um, put on our webpage and put out by Jack.
Good.
Coming soon, so...
Do they have a timeframe on when we'll go live with that?
Um, it's there, it's, we've gotta go in and build it, um, kind of cater it to us, and...
Okay.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Number six, other scheduled business. 6.1, discussion with possible action to approve the purchase of 12 SCBA air packs, 24 cartridges, 20 masks from MES for $120,000, $200, using Sourcewell SCBA MES contract number 011824, with money to come out of Restricted Emergency Services account. Brandon?
I just wanted to put this out there, but coming up to the end of this year, our, our packs will be out of compliance with NFPA, but with our timeline of the life of the packs, we still have time to purchase new packs, but because they're increasing the standards for the life packs at the beginning of this year, all prices of all air packs will be going up. Right now is as good a time as any. Uh, on my three, five-year plan, I put in there that I wanted to replace at least half of them, um, which would be at least six. Uh, I just soon keep in the numbers of six because that's the number of packs we have per truck, so as we do it, we can replace the packs per truck. Um, but also, I put in there to go ahead and get 12, that increase, that goes ahead and gets us both pumpers right now, and then we can get six more later on, and this way we can kind of spread it out, and we don't have to purchase them all once again. We can get them on a separated schedule and a timeline. With that being said, I, I just really appreciate the money to be able to do this right now. Um, that way we can get it at a cheaper price. We're also getting a, a discount from Scott because of the simple fact that we're changing brands and we're doing the upgrade right now versus waiting till later. We're gonna upgrade to 4,500 PSI bottles or cylinders until, um, instead of the 2216s that we have now. Uh, that also means we're gonna end up having to upgrade our Cascade system, which we're planning to do that with other money, either through the county or through fundraiser, more likely through the county. Uh, but right now, we're asking for the air packs, that's the bigger chunk of it. Uh, I filled out a grant last year and actually was awarded the grant, they rescinded it, but they only gave me the money to replace the compressor in the Cascade, not the air packs. And whenever they rescinded it, you had the option to go back and fill it. I was awarded $108,000, I think, but they rescinded it and changed it all up to where you had to refill it out, then top dollar was $100,000, and I just didn't refill it out. So, other than that, right now, we really could use the money to go ahead and get these packs. That gets us a good head start, and then we're gonna, we can have the ability to crank up our old compressor and still fill 4,500-pound cylinders instead of the 2216s. We will have to upgrade the 2216 Cascade cylinders that we have, but that, right now, we get that, we can run that compressor as long as we can. When we remodeled the station, we had them go through the compressor, they went through it, they said, "Yeah, you're capable of filling these 4,500-pound cylinders," but when, over time, they're not, they're not gonna guarantee how long or how many we can fill. Um, with the upgrade, we're also going to 45-minute bottles, which will give our guys more time on air, allowing us to better life safety for us, but also more time fighting fire, more time to save somebody if we need it. So, that's my pitch to you guys. I gotta put it in your hands.
Thank you, Brandon. You guys have any questions?
I'd like to make a statement on that. Um, occasionally I hear people ask, "Why isn't the Fire Department using county money for some of these major purchases?" And they do. Uh, Brandon pointed out that these air packs are on the two pumpers. Folks, those are in-town pumpers. One of them does leave cities limits for structured fires and rescues, but they are both what is helping us keep our ISO rating, and so I definitely feel like this is a very justifiable town expense, uh, to come from, to come from the Town of Hennessy.
I'd like to also add to real quick, the, the ISI packs that we have now. Um, yeah, they're going out of compliance, but we're also having more and more packs where we're having, what do you call them? Brain of the pack?
Yeah.
Those are going out on us more frequently, and we're not finding the parts to repair. Because, yeah, the company, the company is out of service anyway, so we're having to rely on old, handy-down packs to try to find parts and make the packs we have work now.
One more thing to add is you see that we're using the Sourcewell. Sourcewell is an outsourced bidding, um, company, and so we're able to use their big bid process, um, so we don't have to go up to bid for ourselves. So that's why it states that contract and everything in there.
Okay.
Tiffany, where will this money come from?
It will come from Restricted. Um, we have Restricted, um, and then it's broken up to streets, Capitol Outlet, Emergency Services, Swimming Pool, you know, different forms of money that's allocated to it, and so it'd come out of the Emergency Services, in which there's over $500,000 in there right now.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of 12 SCBA, SCBA units and 24, I guess cartridges or cylinders.
Or cylinders.
Okay. And 20 masks from MES for $120,200, using Sourcewell SCBA MES contract number 011824, with money to come from Restricted Emergency Service Account.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Randy?
6.2, discussion with possible action concerning the use of street sweeper equipment to include procurement, rental, lease, and/or contracting services for both short-term and long-term planning and execution. David, I believe this one's yours.
Yeah, this is the one that we tabled last month. Uh, I didn't hear from you guys, you know, I'm not pointing a finger at you, but I figured you were working on it yourself without me, and that's okay.
She has. Um, in fact, we gotten, we got several ideas from many different people.
Good, good.
And so I'll let her explain a little bit of what we found.
Yeah, so we called around to a few of the cities. Either they didn't have one or they couldn't let us, you know, borrow it. So, uh, we were supposed to have someone here to demo a full-size sweeper, but they weren't able to make it again, so started looking at these. I'll let you pass those around. We actually have one. We started today and renting it for a week, see how it does. It's an attachment for the Skid Steer. The only thing we're missing is a little side broom to go with it. It really, uh, if you guys have seen Main Street, a little bit they done today.
I have not seen it.
It gets the flat areas pretty good. It leaves a strip about J.B. by the curb to where we need that little side broom attachment, but so far, it's working pretty good.
Very good.
I happened to be through, through town today, and I saw that running. Does it, does it actually remove the debris, or is it just moving?
Yep, it, it scoops it up, and there's a bucket underneath that hood with a little vacuum, and once we pull, you know, it just, the hydraulics come and latch, dump it in the back of the one time, and then...
Okay.
It's actually pretty neat.
A lot of dust. I did notice that.
Yep.
There's stuff.
It has a deal with water in the front, but as much dust that's collected right now, we just need to go over it a few times before we put down the water, or else we'll just be a big ol' mud pit out there.
So is this company, they're just letting you experiment with it to see if you want it?
We rented that from the Yellow House.
Rented it from Yellow House and heated it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh...
We were gonna try that one. They also have, Deere has the, their own. We were gonna kind of try that one also.
Okay, very good, very good. So, we're making progress, evaluating. I love it, I love it. Can I keep this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alyssa, did, do you know what the cost is if we decided to purchase?
The one we have right now, I think, is around $9,000.
Oh. Gosh, that's a pleasant surprise.
It's a little, it's a little more tastier.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you guys don't need one of them great big ones.
So, are we gonna be able to try the, the brush option as well?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully tomorrow we'll have it here to attach to that.
Oh, okay. So it's just something they didn't have in stock?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
Very good, very good.
Thanks for your work. Okay. 6.3, discussion with possible action to retain Michael Booz to represent the Town of Hennessy regarding the Centennial Solids OCC application. Um, so this one is mine. Um, with the Centennial Solids OCC application, I'm, I'm trying to remember everything. It's been a couple of months since we really spoke on this. Um, do, Ms. Booz, do you have an update for us on kind of where the process is, or?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to talk about, so essentially, Michael, in terms of the update, let's wait, we got an executive session coming up later that he can give you actual legal advice then.
Okay.
This is to just approve his retainer agreement and legal services contract.
Okay.
To officially make him Town Attorney for that matter.
Can we, can we go into the executive session prior to doing this, or do we have to retain him?
Really, do you have him retained, or he's not your attorney in executive session?
Okay.
So...
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
No, that's all right. No, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Um...
Can I interrupt something real quick?
Sure.
There's, you know, the, on this case, would you like to have another attorney besides you, just besides you, you representing the farmers? Would you like for the towns to represent, uh, get our own attorney to help you?
I'm happy to represent, uh, everybody in one group. Um, I have resources to help me. Um, I have an office in Oklahoma City, and then, of course, I work with Paul Schulte in Kingfisher as well, and so, uh, it's not like I'm going at this completely alone. Um, should the need arise, I actually have someone in mind who I think would be, uh, a very good fit to help me, but I think whoever, I think we're stronger as a group with the concerned landowners and the city working together in tandem. Um, and so whoever, should that need arise, whoever that person is, I think, needs to kind of view the case the same way. There's, there's a couple of different ways which I can talk about. The executive session as to how to approach this case, uh, there's a bunch of different angles, and I think the worst thing for everybody involved would be to get two attorneys involved that want to approach it two completely different ways.
All right, thank you.
What, what kind of retainer are we looking at? I haven't seen, has anybody seen anything?
I emailed it out today because I found, I, when I was looking at the agenda, I seen that Shelley didn't get it attached, so I sent it out.
She told me she had some issues getting it uploaded or something, but it was a $2,000 retainer I think.
I think that's what we had in the meeting a minute ago, and that's, that's close to what private people have paid. Um, I think I can, I think I can say that, uh, for participation in this case. Now, some people, I'm gonna be frank about it, have paid a lot more than that. Um, some people that live closer to the proposed waste site, um, that maybe are a little bit, have a little bit more skin in the game, but, um, I thought that was a fair amount based on payments we'd received from other people.
So it's a $2,000 retainer with $350 per hour.
And of course, that would go into a trust account and be billed against this charge that's earned.
How will you bill, like, in, in, I'm just thinking, townwide, I mean, town-wise, um, like, you have all these groups of people, will they, you know, how do you allocate the, you know, like, what you're charging per hour?
We had a meeting in Kingfisher, oh, it was in October, it was still hot outside. We kind of talked through that, um, that there could be some discussion to be had about that. So far, I've kept track of my time, but I haven't billed against any of the amounts that have been paid in. I think what we, and Jared was at the meeting, so I think he can, you know, help shed some light on this, but what we had initially talked about is kind of everyone who, who's paid in will kind of bill against that group proportionately. So, uh, let's say, I'm just gonna make up a number. Let's just say somebody's paid in more, and they're probably closer to the, the problem, and, and I bill $1,000 bucks, we would, we would just bill proportionately against whosever interest has put in money.
Whosever trust account, whosever put the money in.
That's a better way to put it. There's a lot of ways you can do it, and, um, correct me if I'm wrong.
And just seemed like the most logical as, as Michael and I talked through it, so...
Well, I'm sure maybe you keep asking, so that's why I wanted to...
Sure, oh, yeah, no.
In, in full disclosure, some people haven't paid anything, and they're gonna kind of free ride, but, um, they may live further away, or their property's further away, or be less concerned for one reason or another. But I still think it helps to have them as part of the group.
So my other, the other thought that I've had on this, um, kind of to Harold's point, and, you know, my thought is, is, you know, as these things continue, because it seems like we're getting more and more and more of these inquiries, is should the town retain counsel on more of a permanent basis, similar to what we have Jared for, to continue to monitor these situations and, and have the, you know, the best foot forward for the town, because, you know, I, I feel like going forward, we're gonna continue to see things like this, if not disposal wells or other, other s- situations, that, that we're gonna need, um, represented for.
How, how would you even track commission-related matters? I mean, would it be, are you talking to the stuff that would be, you know, within a certain radius of town, or?
Yeah, so things, things that directly affect town assets, such as our water wells, I mean, that's something we've gotta, we've gotta protect. Um, you know, the changes in, in laws on, well, I mean, obviously, the other things, those are, those are for you, but things that are encroaching on our town or our assets that we have to protect, such as our water wells.
Right, it's the things involving the commission and...
Your thoughts on...
Question, how do you stay abreast of that? How do you monitor that?
Right.
I mean, I wish there was a, I have a better answer, but most of those things, they have to publish in the newspaper, and so even though we live in this day and age, the newspaper is still your best source, monitor the legal news. I do, uh, in areas where I own property, I get multiple newspapers, and I, once a week, I go through them just to make sure there's not any filings that I'm not gonna like or be happy with in my area.
Okay.
If it like this deal here, this is like a, a seven-year kind of a plan?
I'm sorry, what was that?
This has been going on for, you know, five to seven years?
This particular case?
Yeah.
That we're talking about? I wouldn't anticipate it would go on that long.
No, I'm talking about it's been going, it's been planned for this long.
Oh, in the, so it's my understanding that there's been discussion about it for an extended period of time, going back about that far, but the actual filings to which we're responding, I think have been, I think they filed them, I wanna say late summer, I don't have the dates right in front of me.
So you're thinking maybe hire Mr. Booz as sort of our environmentally, uh, for environmental concerns to...
Well, Mr. Booz or another firm, something...
Well, for getting like the commission rolling.
Yes, exactly, something, something that we can, you know, somebody that we, we can go to whenever these things arise. You know, we've got, we've got Jared for our day-to-day operations, but, um, you know, Harold and I had a conversation, um, a while back about, you know, these things are gonna continue to happen as, and, you know, we, we...
Just thinking last year, we've had a well drilled right by our water well, you know, now this, you know, we got another deal going on out by our, our water wells, you know, so, uh, you know, uh, where do we stop at, and how do you get it stopped, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't think...
For our interests.
Looking forward, just knowing you're gonna have some more of that, like I've told you all several times, the commission is a different place to practice law, so having somebody with Michael's experience, there kind of, just to be able to make a phone call when it comes up isn't a horrible idea.
Okay.
So I, I think that's a discussion for another day, but...
Sure, sure, no, that's, I'm, I'm trying to look forward, not necessarily just this case. I, I almost feel like we're late in the ballgame at this point, that we, if we're gonna be involved, we, we need to do something. Um, so...
Yeah. I've got a question. Uh, Mr. Booz, you mentioned checking legal notices, so I've got a question. Tiffany, do we have anybody in Town Hall that's, uh, going over those?
No, we're gonna have to subscribe to the Kingfisher paper and have it delivered here, and...
I think it's a good idea, because, uh, yeah, the, since that's the only newspaper we've got in the county, that would be the one we would, I'm assuming everything would have to be published in there as legal notice, am I correct?
And some things at the Corporation Commission also were published in Oklahoma County, and of course, Oklahoma County has multiple newspapers, but I think we get the journal record at my office because it's kind of the main legal publication in Oklahoma City, but now that said, I know people that used to publish in the Edmund Sun because they didn't think anybody would be looking at it.
Uh, okay. But they couldn't, I brings up another point, just to make sure I'm clear. They couldn't do anything in Kingfisher County unless it was published in a county paper, is that correct?
That's generally true.
Okay. That's a good lawyer, that's a good lawyer answer. I like that, that's generally true.
I make a motion to retain Michael Booz to represent the Town of Hennessy regarding Centennial Solids OCC application.
I'll second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
New business, any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 25OS. Okay, number eight, we'll, uh, move into executive session. Make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Now, I suppose our computer's died now.
Hope y'all had a nice nap.
Well, they tried, they were raiding our snacks. They were getting hungry.
Soon as I can get this to come back up. All right. I make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Number 10, council persons' report. Harold?
Nothing.
David?
Nothing.
Okay.
I, I think you skipped 9.3.
Did I?
No, they...
That was in, that was in executive session.
Okay.
Oh, so there was no action on it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Or you can just say there, there was no action taken.
Okay, there was no action taken in the executive session.
Thank you!
Okay.
I'll move to Jern.
Yeah, second.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, the order of that kinda confused me, so...
Same, well, yeah.
That's all right.
I've been confused over all night.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
Yeah, nice to meet you. Are we ready? Okay, Town of Hennessy, Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, regular...
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
John?
Here.
Two, consider approval of consent agenda. Two point one, minutes of previous month's meeting. Two point two, approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Previous month, Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Two point three, approval of meeting schedule for 2026. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? All right. Other scheduled business. Four point one, discussion, discussion with possible action to award RO membrane equipment replacement phase two with funds coming from original RO replacement loan, since funds are still left in that account.
So, we talked a few months ago about the funds still being in the construction account, and that we needed to extend them before we get finalized by the IRS. So, they, we went out to bid for the RO, and we only got this one bid back. It was from Worth Hydrocam, who did the first one. Also, with that being said, it's kind of, it's actually lower than the first one, too, so, the space, but... So, it'll still give us a little bit of money left. We're looking at a generator. And then, also, we'll be able to use some of the other stuff that we've done, that we've already paid for out-of-pocket. We'll be able to claim some of that on there, too, so we can expend it all.
Okay.
But this will have the RO system pretty well. Brand new? Brand new, yeah.
Okay, do we have a total?
Three hundred and...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Okay, I didn't see that. Okay, I make a motion to award the RO membrane equipment replacement phase two to Worth Hydro... Wait, is that on another one, or should I be making this motion now?
No, you're good, Worth Hydrocam.
Okay, Worth Hydrocam of three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Sorry, Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Okay, so it's four point two, the same, or is it something different?
It's the actual contract with Worth Hydrocam.
Okay.
We're trying to get this process sped up, so we don't get into any trouble with IRS.
Okay. Four point two, discussion with possible action to approve, approve contract with RO membrane replacement for phase two. I make a motion to approve contract for RO membrane replacement phase two with Worth Hydro for three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, four point three, discussion with possible action to approve chairman of the Utilities Authority to sign permit application renewal to DEQ to irrigate.
You want me to get that one?
Yeah.
It's just the application to renew the permit to irrigate from the wastewater lagoons to the...
Okay. I make a motion to approve the chairman of the Utilities Authority to sign permit application renewal to DEQ to irrigate.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Five, new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 25 OS. Or six, councilperson's report, Harold?
I sent Bert shut his phone off.
Okay, Bert?
No. Yours is shut down to you.
Yeah, I got a question for Jared, real quick.
Yes, sir.
A couple of meetings back, you said that you were gonna engage the state audit team and see if you could find out where we're at, where we're going.
Still not heard back, reaching out to the DA's office on that. I've still not heard anything back from him. Not rare, but I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to some other folks.
I was gonna be terribly surprised if you did hear back from him.
One of these days, I will surprise you.
Okay, that'd be great. Tiffany, for you, ma'am, have they billed us for any more man-hours?
Nope.
That's all I got, Randy.
Good.
John?
I have nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either.
I can add something to that. I've been watching, and every month, they've been coming out with a, a audit, forensic audit, so I'm hoping that we're...
We're getting closer, yeah.
We're getting closer. I've been watching that! Yes!
So, I've been watching that on their website, you know?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.